Good evening, everyone. Welcome to this meeting of the Washington County Board of Education. At this time, I call the meeting to order. We have six members and our student member present, so we do have a quorum. At this time, we'll all stand, please, as Vice President Stouffer leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by Amendmental Silence.
My Pledge of Allegiance is to the July of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. My question would be to move the flag. I had to pivot to find the flag.
Yeah, it's usually over there.
Okay, we'll begin with approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion?
Move for the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Bigford. Any discussion? All those in favor of approval? Okay, we have six affirmatives. Student member concurs. Our agenda has been approved. This time, we'll have approval of the minutes.
Mrs. Williams, I move for the approval of the closed session minutes dated Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stouffer. Are there any additions or corrections to the closed session minutes dated November 2nd, 2021? All those in favor of approval?
I'm going to abstain.
Okay, so we have five affirmative, and Mr. Evans, you're abstaining. So those minutes have been approved. Mr. Gessford?
Yes, I have moved for the second approval of the business meeting minutes dated Tuesday, November 2nd, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Murray. Are there any additions or corrections to the business meeting minutes of November 2nd, 2021? Okay, all those in favor of approval? We have five affirmative, and Mr. Evans, you are again abstaining. Student member concurs with the affirmative vote, so that set of minutes is approved.
Ms. Williams, on the third motion, approval of the joint meeting with the Washington County delegation to the Maryland General Assembly, minutes dated Tuesday, November 9th, 2021.
Gessford, is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Bigford. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of the delegation meeting on November 9th, 2021? All those in favor of approval? Okay, we have five affirmatives.
Abstain.
Abstentions, Mr. Gessford. So those minutes stand approved. Student member concurred, correct? Thank you. And at this time, we'll have public comment. We have three individuals who have signed up in advance. I'd like to read from Board Policy KD with regard to procedures at business meetings. Each person, each person wishing to address the Board of Education is encouraged but not required to sign up prior to the meeting and may address any topic concerning Washington County Public Schools except personnel or student matters which clearly identify an individual or individuals. Each speaker may speak for up to five minutes. Mr. Bigford is our timekeeper. Mr. Bigford, would you like to explain the system before we begin?
About 30 seconds left, and Red needs to bring it to a close.
Thank you. So we'll go with the first person on the list, and that would be Carol Mallon. Miss Mallon?
Well, good evening, members of the board, Dr. Michael, and all those in attendance this evening and watching online. My name is Carol Mallon, and I'm the current Vice President of the Washington County Teachers' Association, and I've come to just ask you each to participate in our 100th Anniversary Celebration. Now, I have my notes on my phone, got my little readers on. Hopefully, I'll be able to stay within my five-minute limit, Mr. Bigford. So in 2021, as you know, the Washington County Teachers' Association reached its milestone 100th Anniversary. During these 100 years, WCTA has advocated for fair and respectful working conditions for our local educators so that they can provide students with quality learning environments that prepare them for their futures. Thousands of educators have served the students of Washington County, and the impact of these educators has made a difference, not only in the individual lives of students, but also in the collective life of our community. To commemorate this milestone, the WCTA Board of Directors decided to compile an anniversary report. We are asking the community to help us by sending us their tributes to educators and their memories about how our schools and our association benefited them personally and also benefited the communities of Washington County. We hope to hear from parents, students, current and former, business leaders, elected officials, WCTA members, current and former, anyone who has ever attended one of our schools or worked for WCPS or been the beneficiary of public education, past or present. To help the WCTA Board in this effort, individuals can send one or more of the following. You can write a simple teacher tribute about one or more specific WCPS teachers, past or present, who have impacted your life or the lives of your children or even your parents. You can commemorate one specific event, action, or support that WCTA has provided for local public education efforts and local public educators since 1921. In addition, current, former, or retired WCTA members are asked to share their reasons for joining the association and/or the reasons why they value WCTA as an organization. We're running this collection drive through the end of the year. We hope to receive at least 100 responses. We plan to bring those collected tributes and commemorations, put them back into a report, and bring them back, hopefully, to you, our board, in 2022. We do hope that each of you will participate individually and perhaps collectively as a board as well. You can visit our website at mywcta.org to find the submission link, or if you want to be old-school, you can mail them to our office on Oak Ridge Drive. Thank you so much for your time this evening.
Thank you. Mr. Neil Becker. Mr. Becker, I apologize. I see that you were indeed the first person on my list. Your name was typed and the others handwritten, and so I overlooked yours and read it as part of the heading, so.
No apologies necessary. Thank you, President Williams. And good evening to you, President Williams, and board members, Dr. Michael and staff. I love seeing a full room for our meetings. That means the community is paying attention to the work of the Board of Education and the great work that you're doing to lead WCPS forward. Tonight, the Board and staff officially recognize American Education Week. I cannot adequately express my gratitude to the approximately 3,000 educators who support our students and their families. As the last 18 months have demonstrated, public education is essential to the success of students and the community at large. During the pandemic, students have learned remotely, concurrently, and now fortunately in-person for the bulk and those who've chosen to attend via AVE. Food service personnel throughout the pandemic fed children. All children in our community were eligible for meals via WCPS. Transportation, maintenance, clerical, and paraprofessional staff rose to the occasion to ensure materials were accessible. Schools were safe, and classrooms were welcoming when we reopened. Administrators never left their posts, and they remain vigilant in their dedication to students. And tonight, I think we have a lot of educators here. If you're an educator in the school system, stand up, wave, give yourselves a round of applause. Thank you. And as the Board recognizes educators today, I ask you also recognize the increased workload that they are shouldering daily. If the MOU that's on the agenda for later this evening is approved, it's a great positive step, and I thank you for recognizing how the substitute shortage is negatively impacting our educators and our students. The staffing shortages and workload increases require more investment in creative solutions to manufacture and find time for teachers. Teaching has always been a challenging profession. It's rewarding in so many ways, but in addition, the time is required to execute all that is required for our students, including but not limited to planning lessons, uploading documents, downloading documents, grading, entering grades, entering comments, contacting parents, performing Tier 1, Tier 2, Tier 3 instruction, executing continuity plans, executing supplemental instruction, and much, much more. I don't think anyone a decade ago could have predicted what education, especially in public schools, looks like today. In closing tonight, I request that the Board and staff continue to look at all and any creative options to assist teachers navigating uncharted waters as they meet the increasing challenging issues they face in schools today. We cannot afford to lose more qualified educators to other districts and other careers. Thank you, and thank you, educators.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Becky Higgins-Ary. Good evening.
How you all doing? Remember your faces, some new ones? Five minutes, right? I'm not trying to become organized to the max. Be the change. Be the change. Be the change. In public education, what does that imply? So I look back, and I recall the '90s, '95 to be exact, when I started teaching, and my early career was in the 2000s, early 2000s. I understood at that time that be the change really meant that a teacher would help students to learn, right, to grow, to guide them towards what's next, and ultimately to give them that know-how and courage to participate positively in life and hoping that they too would end up being the change. From my first year today, being part of my local association has helped me understand more about the kind of change that would create more change and, if you will, become exponential and have that ripple effect. I want the world of teaching for all of those individuals who work in this field and even those who support students, their parents, the community. I want it to change. When I hear the phrase "kids first" or "we need to think of our kids," I really don't think about things that are people who are first, per se. I see it as all together, and I immediately say yes, and I also wonder how to do that effectively and then exponentially. I've worked with thousands of adult and young people, and I'd like to actually reframe that to say brains and bodies. And when I say brains and bodies is we're looking at science and biology and psychology and the physiology of the brain and how it works, how we learn, how we think, how we feel, and all that in the world of teaching. And I can't help but wonder how adults can feel supported, how the adults who support and teach students need to be cared for and need that best working condition to do what they need to do, how parents need to feel connected and informed about the world of public education as well as supported in their daily lives, trying to manage their schedules, needs, and supporting their kids. And we really realized in this past year, when we realized supervision is really important, daycare is really important, and in our current society, we really do not have a plan to help the American people with childcare. I think of the county commissioners, and I wonder about their philosophy, their values tied to public education as they provide the minimum, when our system is outgrowing itself. I think of the policy and big decision-makers. That's the State Department. It could be politicians, it's school boards, it's MAB, it's all of those. And I wonder, like, can we break free of policies and expectations that are now outdated? I wonder about Kerwin funding. When will it be fully realized and if it will be enough? And will it lead to other changes? And I wonder about the upcoming generation of teachers. As we're facing the great resignation, will they even get a start? Will they find this career rewarding as I have? And will they find it doable? COVID, pandemic was and continues to be devastating, traumatic, isolating. So many other words there. From spring to spring, changes to design and operations actually had to be made. We were forced to make changes, and I think about some of those changes that could have happened in pre-pandemic. So let me just think about, remember, I'm a high school teacher, and I know not everyone had the same experiences, but our vast curriculum was shortened there for a little while. We focused on power standards. We didn't have to gobble our lunch so quickly, and we had time that we could actually relax and enjoy eating with colleagues and collaborating, take a lap around the building. We didn't have the assembly line of subject classes. They were shortened. Things were alternated. The seven-and-a-half-hour workday included additional time, actual office hours. The rush of four to five minutes between classes turned into 10 minutes, which allowed us to actually stick around with kids at the end of class and then a little bit in the beginning. The onslaught of testing slightly, if not all, disappeared, and I could step out and enjoy the sun on my face in the middle of the day. To be clear, there were absolute problems, and notable efforts and challenges were dealt with. But last spring, I had this sense of hope, like we were going to have major change, something that was best for brains and bodies. That didn't really happen this year, but I do want to move forward, and I want everyone to think about what you can do. I want you to be the change. Today, amidst American Education Week, I'm asking you, everyone here, everyone listening and watching, to be the change. Support our students in the future by envisioning even one thing that could change in this design today. Is it a flexible school day? Is it a reduced curriculum? Is it office hours? Is it less direct instruction and more planning and consultation time? Is it some half-days? Can we do something now, in the next month? Can we do something this year to help bring about some of those changes, supporting all of the employees here in Washington County Public Schools? I thank you all for being constant leaders and supporters, and again, I ask for you to be the change. Thank you for allowing me some time.
Thank you, Ms. Higgins-Ary.
What school did you teach at? I'm sorry.
Yes, I'm sorry. This is Becky Higgins-Ary. I am a lead teacher at South Hagerstown High School. I was at North High as a teacher. I've been a lead teacher at Tech High and Tiam Academy, and my career started at Northern Middle School.
Thank you.
I believe the next person is Devin Thompson. Is that correct? Is the name correct? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Devin Thompson. I am currently a second-grade teacher at Ruth A. Monroe Primary School. I did turn in my two weeks' notice today. My last day will be on November 29th, and I wanted to share some of the reasons why I am putting in my resignation. So first off, I want to say thank you to all of my amazing colleagues, my lead teachers, the content specialists, the amazing paraprofessionals, and my student leaders within my classroom. I just want to share some of the events that I've started since the first day of school. I want to start off by saying that I've had an administrator in my classroom every single day due to safety concerns within my classroom of seven-year-olds. I want to just list some events here that have happened in my classroom, starting off with some constant disruptions, from banging on the teacher's desk to throwing chairs to trying to break the classroom windows, throwing books, stealing my keys, my iPad, my wallet, my sunglasses, and even my phone. I've also had students that have eloped, including today. I had a student that ran out to the road. I've had students where we've had to retrieve them out of the woods near our primary school. I've had students that have run out of my classroom down a hallway, and I cannot leave my students because I still have 20 other students in my classroom, so I've had to call for help. I have to lock my desk daily with all of my belongings since my stuff has been stolen multiple times as well as destroyed. My technology has been destroyed by my students by throwing their iPads, writing on permanent markers on my smartboard, by shattering my keyboards, the teacher keyboard as well as student keyboards. My books that I have purchased with my own money have been shredded. They have thrown things out of my cupboards and my drawers. They have injured myself to the point where I've had to go to the hospital. They have punched me in the face, in the ribs, and in the chest. They have bit me and kicked me and called me several names. They have sprayed Expo spray in students' eyes in the classroom. They have, yesterday, a student stabbed another student in the eardrum, and the result of that was to just have the student leave for 20 minutes, and they were right back in the classroom. I've had students throwing other things in other students' faces, such as base tin blocks, erasers, crayons, pencils, et cetera, books. I've had to break up physical fights where another student was choking another student to the point where the student was gasping for air. I've had students jumping off of tables, desks, chairs, and even counters. I've been spit on as well as the student spitting on other students without their masks on. I have also been threatened, which I've never could imagine being threatened as a teacher from a seven-year-old. The student threatened that he would bring a gun to school to kill me, as well as went around to other students and put a finger gun to their head. Another student, in response to that, brought a switchblade to school the next day to try to protect himself. Also, many of my students have been stabbed, pushed, shoved, kicked, bit, and spit on. Some of the profanity, which I'm not going to say, can range, you can use your imagination, but one day, I had my whole class, not I, excuse me, a student had my whole class shouting at me, "F you," with the B-word following. The only repercussions that have occurred from these students, and it's not just one student, it's multiple students in my classroom, I have reached out to help multiple times from my administrators as well as people at the board office, and the only response that I've gotten is we'll have a meeting to discuss strategies, and those strategies have failed. I have tried my own. I have worked with lead teachers. I have worked with behavior specialists. I've worked with social workers all within my classroom, and those have all failed. I had a student that was finally removed from my classroom to be put in the behavioral support room, but they reassured me that the student would be coming back as soon as they could find a one-on-one paraprofessional to be put into my classroom. I am resigning today because my students are not making progress because there are so many disruptions and disrespect going on in my classroom. I still have a little passion for teaching, and that is why I'm quitting today, because I know if I try to bulldoze through the rest of the year, I will no longer be a teacher, and I appreciate everything that WCPS has offered for me these last two years. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Is there anyone else who wishes to come forward to speak during public comment? Good evening.
Hi, my name is Justina Jordan. I am the school counselor at Fountain Rock and Pleasant Valley. I'm not as great of a speaker as everyone else, so this is my first time actually speaking, but I do want to thank Mr. Higgins for his disclosure and honesty, because unfortunately, that is the case across the county. With that said, I'm going to focus on what can we do to fix it. So I have written you guys a letter, and I submitted it to the county commissioners as well, and I'm just going to read it. I have written to you before, but in case you aren't familiar, my name is Justina Jordan, and I am the school counselor at Fountain Rock and Pleasant Valley Elementary. Yes, you heard that correctly. I am the school counselor. I split my time between both buildings. My caseload is 500 students to one part-time counselor. While the American School Counselor Association recommends one full-time counselor to 250 students, while some elementary schools have one, even two, school counselors, behavioral specialists, family liaisons, community school counselors and social workers, Fountain Rock and Pleasant Valley have one part-time counselor that does the job of all of those listed above. I am the counselor. I am the liaison. I am the behavior support and more. I do these jobs while also balancing my actual job. I do this while doing lessons, small groups, individual counseling, managing 504s, facilitating SST, supporting families and staff, and coordinating outside services. To break this down even further, as of today, November 16th, I have 66 days left with students at Fountain Rock and 63 days left with students at Pleasant Valley until the end of the year. 66 and 63 days to make an impact on students, to do the job my fellow school counselors are doing and some, but in half of the time. With that said, there is a glaring inequity of services within our county, and the students of Fountain Rock and Pleasant Valley are suffering because of it. No one person can possibly do what you are asking me to do and do it well. Is this what putting our students first looks like? I implore you to invest in a full-time counselor at both Fountain Rock and Pleasant Valley Elementary. Below is a list of signatures from staff at both Fountain Rock and Pleasant Valley who wish to see this happen. Thank you, guys, so much for your time and consideration, and I just really appreciate it. So below, I did get a list of signatures from everyone who wishes to see this, so thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan.
Mrs. Williams, could I ask Mrs. Jordan to make copies of that and present it to all of us members sometime this week? Thank you.
I think that may have come as an email.
It came in an email.
I wanted to see the signatures that she had.
It was on the email.
With the signatures? Yeah. Okay. Apparently, I didn't see the signatures on your email, so that's good. So we don't need it. Thank you.
Wishes to come forth to speak? Good evening.
Good evening, President Williams, Vice President Stouffer, Dr. Michael.
Good evening, President Williams, Vice President staffer, Dr. Michael, and all members of the Board of Education. My name is Sarah Alexander, and I am the parent of two former WCPS students. I am here this evening with a plea from parents and educators throughout all of Washington County. On April 19th, my 15-year-old son, Aiden, died from suicide. He was an honor roll student, taking honors and AP level classes. He was a member of the soccer and track teams. He was loved by many and was described as a student who was always there for others. His smile and laugh were infectious to all who knew him. He accepted others for who they were. He made people feel welcome, and he helped others when they were down. Both of my children experienced pervasive bullying at school. My oldest was teased and berated by his peers through all of middle and most of high school because of how his classmates and peers perceived him. He was called names and had lewd comments spewed at him daily. The way he was treated by his peers was so horrendous, he reached a point where he began having suicidal ideations in the eighth grade. When he entered high school, his treatment became worse, especially on the soccer field. After a sophomore year, he begged us, his parents, to allow him to quit soccer. He dreaded going to practice and began feeling physically ill because of the way he was treated by his teammates. Aiden, my 15-year-old, was subject to the same treatment as his older brother. He was on the receiving end of horrific comments, things that would cut most adults to their core. Here are a few things that have happened inside the schools while my children were there. One boy was told he should kill himself and was handed a suicide plan by a group of students. The administration did nothing. Those same students who gave that child the suicide plan would chew food in the cafeteria and spit it on this boy. Again, the administration did nothing. Hazing a freshman took place on the soccer team, and my oldest son played for the school during his freshman year. During grades six through eight, my oldest son and his classmates were told by the teachers every single year that they were the worst behaved class they'd ever seen. They were the reason why they were quitting, and they never deserved any of the PBIS rewards that the school was offering to them. When he got to high school, the teachers told them they had heard just how horrible they really were. Just this year, students have been telling others to stay away from so-and-so because if you don't, you're going to catch their gayness. The use of the N-word towards students of color with the intent to intimidate runs rampant. An eighth-grade teacher recounted to parents at the eighth-grade promotion ceremony a story about how he had written a fake lunch detention slip for a student. He laughed and reveled in the fact that the student showed up to his room in tears. He thought that was appropriate. The night before Aiden's death, I picked him up from a pickup soccer game. He got into my car with tears streaming down his face. He recounted the terrible things that were said to him by a teammate as well as a schoolmate. He explained how this person yet again had berated him, tore him down emotionally, and made him question his value and his worth in life. I know of multiple instances of students and parents approaching coaches, staff, and administrators to share their concerns. In each instance, the concerns were swept under the rug and nothing ever changed. Since Aiden's death, the number of people who have shared the same experiences as our boys within the school and on social media platforms from peers is staggering. As an educator myself for another county, I completely understand the difficulty and discomfort that comes with having conversations regarding such topics. Imagine how uncomfortable it is for my family and I to walk past Aiden's closed bedroom door every single day knowing he will never be in it again. Imagine our discomfort as we see his bookbag still sitting where he left it on his last day of school, April 16th, 2021, including his lunchbox with the trash still in it from his last ever school lunch. Imagine our discomfort in knowing the last picture we have of Aiden was of him laying in a casket. Imagine knowing the only way to ever hold your child again is to pick up the urn that contains their ashes. If anybody understands the true depth of discomfort, it's us, his family. The students in the community are crying out to be heard. The homophobia, racism, lack of safe and affirming spaces is running rampant. It has created a deep-seated culture in the community of intolerance of those who are perceived as different or of members or are members of historically marginalized populations. As an educator for another county, I am aware that school systems are struggling, and COVID has amplified every single challenge. But now is the time to reflect. What trainings, professional development are required but available to staff who want to learn more about meeting the mental health needs of their students? What resources are available to your students? What provisions have you put into teacher contracts about mental health in ensuring that their mental health is met so that way they can meet the mental health needs of their students? As the Board of Education, you have an obligation to take care of your students and staff, and that does include their mental health. According to the Youth Risk Behavior Surveillance Survey in 2018, pre-pandemic, 18% of high schoolers and 23% of middle schoolers in the state of Maryland who were surveyed had seriously considered suicide within the 30 days prior to taking the survey. 14.3% of them had made a plan, and 8.8% actually made an attempt. Maryland has the 21st highest rate of suicide in the nation among those ages 15 to 24, at 12%. Did you know that one suicide death impacts at least 147 other individuals? Those 147 people become known as suicide loss survivors. Let's apply that to our community, and I assure you, Aiden's death has impacted well over 147 people. Again, I'm asking you, I'm pleading with you to please reflect and help staff and students with their mental health concern. As I conclude my public statement, I want to leave you with three questions. Number one, what is taking place in this particular school community that has created a culture and climate where these types of behaviors are tolerated and common practice? What has made this particular school community a safe haven for homophobia, racism, and intolerance? What has allowed the administrators, multiple of them, to do nothing, to be unable to enact change? Our family is creating a foundation in Aiden's honor. Part of that foundation educators is for you. We want to help you. His foundation asks, what kind of ripple effect do you want to create? Because every action creates a ripple effect. Do you want it to be a positive one or a negative one? The last question is the one Aiden asked his track coach every single day. Hey, Coach, how can I get better? Every day, he asked, how can I get better? That's my challenge to you, the Board of Education. Reflect on the kind of ripple effect you would like to create as a school system, and seriously, think about what you can do as educational leaders to get better. While I may no longer have any students actively enrolled in Washington County public schools, I promise you, I'm not going anywhere. You will hear from me again, and I will be watching and waiting to see the actions or inactions, because those are just as loud, if not louder, that you take. Our kids and these educators behind me deserve better. Hasn't even been seven months. Less than seven months that my son took his own life because of the way he was treated within Washington County public schools. As the previous speaker said, be the change.
Thank you, Mrs. Alexander. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Yes, Mrs. Flowers.
Thank you for sharing. It's hard to... I'm sorry. That was... I don't have many words after that. Marsha Flowers, and thank you for allowing us to speak and share our concerns and our thoughts. I've talked to all of you on one occasion or another with a lot of other things, as you remember. I just want to share a couple concerns. It seemed very minimal compared to what she's dealing with. My first concern is over attendance or the lack thereof, along with the passing of students with very low attendance. Just a concern of kids that need to be in school. And I know it's been a difficult last couple of years with things with attendance and parents' perceptions and students' perceptions with everything with COVID. But as far as I know, students will be passed to the next grade level regardless of the number of days missed and/or the completion of work coinciding with that grade level expectation. And I just am charging you, I really think our policies need to be looked at and revisited with more expectations and consequences. To have some students attending school less than 25 days in an entire year or a half a day for another year, and moving on to the next grade without any direction, all the people that are available to talk about it, student support teams, everything else, something needs to be changed. It's not only a shame for that student and what they're, the lack that they're getting. They're crying out for help in other ways, too, usually has some other concerns. But it's also a slap in the face to those that do attend school regularly and attempt to complete their work, whether they do it well or not. I just think we really need to revisit our attendance policies that we have because there's some hurting families that we are breeding, people that continue to pass on without coming to school. My next concern is Google Voice. I don't know why we don't have that this year for teachers. That was a huge help last year when we are encouraged not to use our own devices, but yet a Google Voice account was immediate. Parents respond much more to text messages than they do to phone calls. They usually will say, yes, call me after school or whatever. If I try to call, leave an email through the system that we have through Synergy, it doesn't usually go as well. Without using our own devices, I said, last year, parents responded to all this, and I would ask that that be revisited. As far as money well spent, I thought that was a huge deal that made a big impact to communicate with parents on many levels, not just because someone was in trouble about grades, about work, about anything else that needed to happen. That was a much better use of anything that we've ever had with communicating with parents in the past. And lastly, I'm thankful that we saved our middle, high school from closure, but I would like to meet with the board members and Dr. Michael at a time that's more convenient about concerns, not only for the middle and high school, but also the elementary. There's too much to bring up at this meeting, but I would like to pick up with some concerns where we left off in June about programming, available programs that's been lost, and staff positions that have been lost, as well as other situations that are important to our community. I just want to thank you for listening to my concerns, those three, and putting it out on the record, and I look forward to meeting you to discuss these matters at a time that works better for everybody involved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Flowers. Is there anyone else? Good evening.
My name is William Kessler. Good evening. I would like to start off by warning anyone listening at home near the children that what I have to say is not appropriate for children to hear. I wouldn't want my kids to hear this. So I want to give everyone else the opportunity to protect their children. I was at the last board meeting, and was shocked that you all do not seem to care about the graphic and inappropriate contents of our school libraries. Rather than directly addressing the concerns of parents, you sent your lawyer to this microphone to tell us that nothing can be done about books in the library, and that is unacceptable. I remember when I was in school, I remember when I was in school, sometimes when we returned from a break, teachers would ask us what we did over the break. I wonder, would this board consider it appropriate for a fifth grader to stand up in front of their class in response to that prompt, to say, what if I told you I touched another guy's dick? What if I told you I sucked it? I was 10 years old, but it's true. I sucked Doug's dick, the real estate guy, and he sucked mine, too. By the way, that real estate man, real estate guy, is an adult man. So this is a man having oral sex with a 10-year-old. I would hope that if a student said that, the teachers would report this as statutory rape to the authorities, but yet it seems okay if it's written in a book in our libraries. Just so you know, that was a quote from the book Lawn Boy by Jonathan Evison, I believe his last name is pronounced, who the author has admitted that the book was not written for children. But yet, here it is in our school libraries. Here's another quote from a book in our school libraries. This book is titled All Boys Aren't Blue by George Johnson. "He reached his hand down and pulled out my dick. He quickly went to giving me head. I just sat back and enjoyed it, as I could tell he was, too. For the first few minutes, we dry-humped and grinded. I was behind him with my stomach on his back as we kissed. He pulled out some condom and some lube. I had never done it before. I had one point of reference, though, and that was my seven-plus years of watching pornography. Although the porn was heterosexual, it was enough of a reference point to get the job done." I do not blame this board, or the school administrators, or the librarians for the fact that these books have showed up in our schools. I'm sure that they were bought at the recommendation of some national organization, and were just checking boxes. However, now that we have identified that there is a problem, it is time to address and fix the problem. It is time to pull the books from the library that we have concerns over until they can be reviewed in more detail. I don't, I don't think we should just grab a bunch of books and throw them in the trash, but I think we should pull them long enough to look at them. There is without a doubt books in these schools that do not belong in any K-12 school library, and they need to go. For books that are questionable in content but may not rise to the level of removal, maybe they could be placed in a special collection behind the circulation desk and require parental approval for students to access. Maybe there are other solutions, but it's time to solve this problem and not hide behind your lawyer. And I also wonder, as some of the other comments I've heard here tonight with the behavior of students, what other kind of material might be available to them that encourages inappropriate behavior, not necessarily just sexually, but also the other behaviors in suicide, and the books really need to be looked at. Also, in light of the situation, I think the board needs to take a close look at any national services we use and any national organizations we participate in. Make sure their values align with the values of this community. Parents should not have to compromise their family morals to send their children to public school. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kessler. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Ethan Lowen, and, and actually, I really want to thank the teachers for being here. I really do. Thank you. The, and I just want to say that no one loves the teachers more than the parents do because the only people who love the children more than the teachers are the parents. And so, whatever it is that it takes to make it work for you guys is what we want. And we've been trying to do that for the last three months. Parents have been showing up every board meeting, and now you're here, and I hope you don't stop coming. I think it's very important. And tomorrow night, by the way, 7:00 PM at the American Legion, there's going to be a person speaking from a national organization about taking back control of the schools so that the teachers and the parents are the ones determining what is happening with the kids. So I would also encourage everyone here tonight to be there, and anyone listening. It's the American Legion of Williamsport. So I'm speaking about this board's response to the parents at the last meeting, when the parents spoke about the pornographic books in our school libraries. The response from this board was kind of shocking. There was not a single human response at finding out that pornography is in our schools. Instead, this board brought its attorney up to this table, and she referenced a Supreme Court case from 1984. She claimed that during the trial, the Supreme Court made it illegal for school boards to remove pornography, because according to the attorney's description, the Supreme Court ruling, once a book is in school libraries, regardless of what is later found out about the books after people have started reading it, it violates the First Amendment's freedom of speech to remove it. After that proclamation was made, this board essentially said matter closed, time for the silly parents to go home. That entire exercise was buried in arrogance and absurdity. None of that made logical, moral, or legal sense. What group of leaders, whether they're on the Supreme Court or on a local school board, would ever make it illegal for adults to protect children? Therefore, I read the ruling for myself. The Supreme Court case your attorney spoke about is titled Island Trees Union Free School District versus Pico, and it is the Supreme Court's only case ever involving the removal of library books by a school board. The ruling for this court case has two points. Point number one is very similar to what your attorney stated. School boards cannot remove books from a library solely because the books contain opinions that the board members disagree with. The most common example mentioned is removing books that a school board finds to be unpatriotic. However, the ruling does allow for the board members' opinions to be part of the process of judging if a book should stay or be removed as long as their opinions are not the sole reason. The second point, which was not mentioned at all, is that the ruling lists out permissible reasons for removal. They are, one, educational suitability. This is quoted from the ruling. Good taste, relevance, appropriateness to age and grade, pervasive vulgarity. Secondarily, one of the justices who wrote the majority opinion added to that list these criteria. If it contains offensive language, if the ideas it advances are manifestly inimical to the public welfare, if it is a subject that is less deserving of emphasis than other subjects. In other words, the Supreme Court is saying in this ruling what it has always said. The highest performing and most fair society is the one where its citizens are able to live out their freedoms. However, all freedoms can be abused or misused, and in the case of children who cannot protect themselves, the Supreme Court expects school boards to protect their students from First Amendment freedoms being abused or misused. When you read and discuss the ruling in its entirety, it is both logical and moral. This part of the ruling summarizes the simplicity of what the Supreme Court is saying, and I quote, "This would be a very different case if the record demonstrated that petitioners had employed established, regular, and facially unbiased procedures for the review of controversial materials." It's that common sense and well-intended. Books get removed from school libraries all the time. That is how these books got into the libraries. The books that were there before were thrown out so that these books could take their place. And in the case of both of the books mentioned at the last school board, other meetings, other school boards have already removed them. The book Trip to Alaska was the most removed book of 2015. Similar, the book Lawn Boy is headed towards becoming the most removed book of this year. Last Friday, our local newspaper wrote an article about this issue, and I was reading through the comments on their Facebook page, and there were a lot of people claiming that it's just people who are angry about books being written by homosexuals. I was thinking of replying to a person in that group and saying, it's got nothing to do with homosexuals writing books. The reason you're seeing those books listed is because the only pornography that's been purchased is homosexual. There simply is not much, if any, heterosexual pornography in the schools. And as I was about to write that, it suddenly struck me, when you read what's in these books, it is not just pornography. A huge portion of the pornographic events include pedophilia, and every instance of pedophilia is presented in a positive light, every one. Listen to this quote from one of your books titled Glass Castle. "Mom, Uncle Stanley is behaving inappropriately," I said. "Oh, you're probably imagining it," she said. "He groped me and he's wanking off." Mom cocked her head and looked concerned. Poor Stanley, she said. He's so lonely. So in this scene, the mother told her son, who just got fondled by a pedophile, as she feels bad for the pedophile. These are not only pornographic books that you're defending. Most of these books are also teaching children to be submissive victims of pedophilia. It doesn't matter how hard you push your attorney to come up with something, everyone knows there is no court that is stopping you from protecting children. You have every right and responsibility to have these books removed, and you're capable of having them all removed before lunchtime tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowen. Is there anyone else? No one else? Thank you to all who have commented this evening. At this time, we'll have board member response to public comment. Anyone who wishes to comment? Mr. Gessford?
Thank you, Mrs. Williams. I'd like to thank everybody who came tonight to speak to the mother that lost her child. I know that we all are sorry for that. We do have to do a better job. I've been saying this a long time about the bullying issue, and it seems like every year this just keeps being a conversation, and I'm getting a little tired myself of hearing the same thing. So I would like to ask our superintendent to please meet with some of these, these folks. We've got to get this taken care of. We just cannot have this as a continuous conversation of we have a problem. We've got to have a solution. To the teacher, oh my gosh, and to all the teachers that are out there shaking their head that they're going through the same thing. We've heard this. We've heard this.
And what are we doing about it? How are we fixing it?
Unfortunately, we can't respond to public, so this is my time to talk. I will, I will say, I'm going to be really dedicated on trying to figure out what, what the problem is. And I, I really am sorry that we can't answer those questions for you tonight, and they're just, this is, it's bigger than just tonight. But I am sorry. I'm sorry you have been put through that. I'm sorry for all the teachers that have put... We've heard stories for years about this, and we, I say, sometimes our hands are tied, and sometimes we need to do a better job, and I think this time we need a better job. So thank you all for coming tonight and sharing your stories.
I'd like to echo what Mr. Gessford did say. I know school safety is always a big concern, and, you know, I personally am under the belief that, you know, when, when there are bad behaviors and you have, you know, the, the small minority, essentially, I don't want to say running the school, because I don't think that is the case, but, you know, when you have things like that happening, you got cases like what happened to this young lady's son, and there are no words to, to describe any sorrow or anything like that. It's horrible, and like I said, I do hope that, you know, we will be able to find solutions that don't take time to implement or see their effects, but I'm really hoping that we can. I don't know what the answer is, and I do know that we do have a great team at the board that are listening to what you all have to say, and I'm confident that hopefully we can find solutions that will show immediate effect and, you know, and we could go and see some results. I will say about the books, I was not here at the meeting last time. You know, I, I don't think it is unreasonable to ask to review certain books. I also don't think it's reasonable to just say, here's a list of books that we want you to remove as well. So I also hope that we can find a process to at least review something if there's a reasonable concern brought. You know, just hearing some of those excerpts, I do think that that's, just for those three alone, I do think that that's reasonable to at least just review them and, and make sure we know what's in them, because I forget who was saying it, you know, you know, we have our, our eFolat system, and, you know, the, I mean, at the end of the day, the very large portion of the country, if not the whole country, uses them. And, you know, do we really know where, what, where they're getting their reviews from where they're getting their information? You know, so I think we do need to at least be reasonable and maybe review especially some of the stuff that we just heard there as well, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mrs. Murray?
Thank you. I'd just like to thank everybody for coming out this evening. We appreciate your comments. We are listening. I've worked with some of you. I know what you're going through. It's not easy. There have to be solutions. We have to find the solutions to help you. Mr. Thompson, I'm so sorry you've gone through this. I'm surprised you've stuck it out this long. Thank you for everything you've done, and I hope you don't give up on being a teacher. I hope that you find your place and, and you continue to educate children, because I think you have a good heart and, and would be good at it. Like you said, we are listening. We're going to try to do the best that we can for you, and keep coming back and keep, keep coming and giving us your opinions. We really do appreciate it, so thank you.
Mr. Gupta?
I want to thank all the teachers that came out today in talking about all the issues that you guys face. You know, I'm the student member on the Board of Education. I attend North Hagerstown High School. I talk to teachers every single day. They talk to me about their concerns. I've heard a lot of the same concerns from teachers that I've heard today with teachers in school. I've talked to students in schools. I've even personally been messaged by students at other schools talking about mental health problems, talking about administrators not listening, and fortunately, all of those have gotten figured out. But I want to thank all of the students, all of the teachers who came out today to talk about this issue that's really important to me. And mental health is something that I will continue. My term is only one year, but throughout my entire term, I promise to work toward supporting the mental health of both teachers and students.
Thank you, Mr. Gupta. Yes, Mr. Stafford?
To Mrs. Alexander, I'd just like to say, you know, it's probably too late, but I understand the loss of a child, so I don't know what else to say about that. I'll just say this, our schools are a microcosm of society, and this is why, and I don't offer this as an excuse, but this is why this board and this superintendent has asked repeatedly, repeatedly, for more funding so that we can put social workers, therapists, school psychologists, and everything in the school. And what are we told? What are we told every year? We fund you very well. We're going to give you maintenance of effort. We're going to give you what we have to do by law, and that's it. You'll have to do more with less. And I say that because some of you know I'm a 42-year veteran of this school system. For many years, I sat on the WCTA Board of Directors. I can recall one year in 1973, we picketed county commissioners' homes, and I remember one commissioner, Hal Boyer, who I had as a professor at HJC at the time, years before, he came out, started to picket with us. And Hal was that type of character. He was kind of eccentric in some ways, but, you know, I, I don't know what the solutions are. I don't know what the solutions are. I really don't. I can only say, this group worries all the time. We have private individual conversations with one or two of us from time to time, and we worry about things. I don't know what the solutions are. For Mr. Johnson, I'm sorry to hear that you're... Did I get your name? Huh?
Thompson.
Thompson. I had it written down here. I'm sorry. I even had it written down. That you're leaving teaching. Teaching is a great profession. I loved it for 42 years. I loved coaching. And going back to Mrs. Alexander, I, I don't know who the coach was at Smithsburg that, or what the dynamics on the soccer team were, but as a former soccer coach for 27 years, I can't imagine what could have happened and what was allowed on, on those teams. It wouldn't have been allowed on my team for what it's worth, but then that was another era. I haven't coached since 2003, so things have changed, I guess. Again, if any of you want to talk to me, you got my phone number. It's listed on the board website. Still waiting for those phone calls, which I've never gotten. So I'm still waiting.
Thank you, Mr. Stafford. Did you have something else you wanted to say?
Yes, the only thing I'd like to say is, I did send an email to staff. We do have some employee assistant programs for, for therapy, and I will say, please, if you need help, if you have, it's not bad for you to go to talk to someone. We have it in our school system through our insurance. I'll be the first one to say, I've, I've used them. There's nothing wrong with going and talking to someone if you're having some issues. Please use these programs that we have. There's six listed here, and if you have any questions, contact Human Resources, Terry Baker. You know, our benefit program. Please use that. Please don't, don't wait till it's too late. Go talk to someone. It's, there's nothing wrong with speaking to somebody. And if we have these programs available, it's $20 copay. Please use that. Is this really important for your mental health, our mental health, the students? We need you to be healthy and well, and these programs are for you, so please use them.
Thank you, Mr. Gessford. Mr. Pickford?
I will say, I've been on this board for five years. This was the first night I had to fight off tears. I really appreciate the comments and the bravery. It's wonderful to see so many teachers here. It's wonderful to see the calls for therapists. I do think back to, I think it was two years ago that Dr. Michael went to every single county commissioner meeting, trying to show them that our population has changed, but their funding has not. We have kids with dramatic needs, and we need more counselors. We need more therapists. We need more support. Hopefully, more is coming with this blueprint bill, but even that's a bit of a challenge to figure it out. I do know more money's coming, but the fact that you, all of you have, and my wife's a teacher in Frederick County, so I hear the stories, and you know there's very similar challenges everywhere, but particularly here, at least in Frederick, they give above maintenance of effort. And here, it's the bare minimum, and yet we look for every single way we can stretch that dollar, but I think we're up to almost 88% of our budget now. We just go into salaries, and we haven't been able to give you a raise. And we go back every year and we say, it's up to you guys to pay for the raise, because we're at 88% of our budget is salaries. You know, maintenance of effort's not going to cut it, and, you know, we were able to do it one year because of Governor Hogan and state funding. We've been able to, we gave a bonus last year because of COVID funding, but again, we haven't been able to give a meaningful raise in a while. And to the mother of the Smithsburg student, again, that, I was, it was hard to fight back tears. I did, I was so impressed when you spoke to the newspaper, and it seemed like days after your, your son died, and I just thought, what a brave mother that is, because I've been in a situation, not, nothing as horrible as yours, but of a family member who died, and we showed up at the funeral home, and there were TV cameras there, and, and I just, the fact that you're willing to stand up and talk about your son and to say very uncomfortable things and to challenge people, I really appreciate that, and it will impact people. It will impact lives. And to our, our teacher from Hancock, I appreciate our conversations with you and our lunch with you, and, and I do, I would like to continue that conversation and see what we can do for, for many of our elementary schools, but please reach out. You know how to get ahold of me. So thank you very much.
It's been a very emotional evening for me, and I, I don't know that I trust myself to, to try to express my thoughts in words, except to say to Mr. Thompson, I'm so very sorry for your experience. It's unimaginable that children at such a young age would behave in that manner, but as Mr. Stafford said, our schools are a microcosm of our society, of our community. And teachers, to all of you who've come out, I am a strong advocate for social workers, for guidance, counselors. We need more for psychologists. Recognize that we need to help, but it is a funding issue, and it's an issue of priorities. You know, if, if we don't have the funding, what needs to be cut to be able to fund those positions that are so... positions that are so very needed? As a former teacher myself, I know the difficulties of being a classroom teacher, of working in an elementary school, a middle school, never worked in a high school. I can't imagine teaching today. I just cannot imagine. To Mrs. Alexander.
Just don't say anything.
My heart aches for you and for your family. Someone once said that hurting people hurt other people. And I think today, there are a lot of people walking around very hurt and take satisfaction in hurting others. And again, that's a very, very sad commentary on our community and on our society. I heard Mr. Stauffer say, he doesn't have the answers. I know that as a board and the superintendent sitting here to my left, we want to work to find the answers. We want to work to find the solutions. We need your help. We need your suggestions, and we need for you to come out, just like you did this evening, and share with us to let us know what's happening and what the needs are. So, I thank you again for coming out, taking the time to speak from the heart. Anyone else? Okay, that ends our public comment and board member response to public comment portion of our meeting. We have one item of old business this evening, and that is the consideration of the second reading of proposed changes to policy JFCA, student dress code.
Good evening. The Policy Committee is conducting a comprehensive review of the student section of the Board of Education's policy manual. The committee conducted a review of policy JFCA at its public work sessions on September 28th and October 26th of this year. The Board of Education has not reviewed this policy in eight years, so the committee placed the policy in the correct policy format. A significant change to the policy is the requirement that the superintendent form an advisory work group comprised of students, staff, and parents or guardians to assist with updating the accompanying administrative regulation, which has also not been reviewed in eight years. The Board of Education approved the first reading of proposed changes to policy JFCA at the recommendation of the committee on November 2nd, 2021. Following the board's approval of the first reading, the committee had a public notice placed on the school's systems website and board doc seeking comments. The committee did not receive any comments. The committee is now recommending the Board of Education adopt the second reading of proposed changes to policy JFCA.
Ms. Ram, is there a motion?
And I move to approve the second reading of proposed changes to policy JFCA entitled Student Dress Code.
Thank you, Mr. Pickford. Or is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Any questions or any discussion?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, and forgive me, I was not able to be here last meeting, so I apologize if these were already brought up. But it sounds, if I'm reading this correctly, Dr. Michael, it sounds like you're going to commit or create a committee to kind of set the dress code. Is that...
It's not a question to me, and it appears to me, when I look at what the policy says, that that would be the direction of the board, that we would establish a committee to do that.
Because the one thing that I did have a concern with that was kind of brought to my attention shortly after this was I had spoke with a parent, and I briefly spoke to you privately about it, about some concerns they had with some behaviors at South High. And one of them was, and I don't know if I'm still accurate in saying this, I may be mistaken, but students are allowed to wear head coverings at South High, which, you know, for cultural purposes, that's, you know, why it was allowed. And I certainly get that, but some of the unintended consequences of, you know, students wearing ski masks, you know, essentially covering up their face and their identity when they go out and commit bad behavior. You know, so that's a concern of mine as we go through this, you know, kind of look at that and make sure that, you know, we're looking at, you know, some of the unintended consequences as well as we go through this.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Mr. Pickford, did you want to speak? As chair of the Policy Committee, did you have anything that you wanted to say about the policy?
No, it's one of those, it's one of those difficult policies because it, the policy itself doesn't get too specific, and it didn't get too specific, and then we leave it up to regulations to adapt for the times. But the one thing I did say about this policy that I felt very comfortable with is that we do call for an advisory work group with a variety of representation. We didn't get any direct comments. I will say, the newspaper just ran a story. Parts of it were not correct. It said you were going to, already were going to chair a group, and that won't happen until we pass this policy. But I did sort of glance through some of the comments about it, and one of the things that I've heard is that some of the current policies tend to target women and not young men. So, those are the sorts of things that I think a group, it'll be invaluable to hear from students, as we heard from Tanish in our Policy Committee. Looking forward to hearing what the advisory group comes up with if this policy passes.
As am I. Thank you. Anyone else have a question or comment, any further discussion? Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the second reading of proposed changes to policy JFCA entitled Student Dress Code. All those in favor? We have six affirmative votes, and the student member concurs, so the motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Ram. We'll move on to new business. Our first item of new business is the consideration of this evening's consent agenda. We have Mr. Bakedal with us presenting.
Good evening, President Williams, members of the board, Dr. Michael. Tonight, I have five items for your review. The Purchasing Review Committee has reviewed these items and are being recommended for approval. And staff is available if you have any additional questions.
Thank you, Mr. Bakedal. Is there a motion?
And I move to approve the awards and renewals for professional design services, HVAC replacement at Williamsport High School and Marshall Street School, to C.J.L. Engineering Incorporated at a cost of $685,000. Landscaping materials renewal to the Mulchman LLC at the unit prices listed. Professional auditing services renewal to Zelenkovsky Axle Rod LLC at a cost of $47,300. Unit price contract for earthworks renewal to Advantage Landscape and Construction, Huntsberry Brothers, Jernigan's Environmental Services, Shades of Green Landscaping, Stevens Excavating, and Tri-State Fencing at the unit prices listed. And Information Technology Database Integration Support Services to AJS Inc. at a cost not to exceed $197,600.
Thank you, Mr. Pickford. Is there a second to Mr. Pickford's motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Any question, discussion? Mr. Gassford?
So, I have a question with number five. Information Technology Database Integration of Support Services at a cost of $197,600. This would be for like basically one position, and I'm wondering why we aren't trying to get one person instead of having a group come in and run this for us? If somebody could give me a little bit more detail on that, what that involves?
Sure. I'm Joe Allen, Executive Director of Technology. So, President Williams, Dr. Michael, members of the board. The role of Technology Database Integration Support is really critical. It manages the different databases that run the student information system, the HR system, the finance system. It makes all that data talk to each other and go back and forth. Our desire would be to get an individual that could do this, but with the great resignation that's going on, it's very difficult to find that. So, it will take us probably many months to get that person in place. And while we're doing that, we need someone to keep the lights on, as they say.
So, this is just to get us over the hump period?
Correct.
Till we get somebody in our position?
Correct.
And why are we losing technology people? I know, but maybe the public would like to know.
Sure. We're losing technology people because they have an opportunity, well, I wrote it here. You know, a worker who lives in Washington County now can access the job markets of Washington, DC, New York, Silicon Valley, and they can still live right here in Washington County and collect those kinds of salaries. Because a lot of the work that technology people do, they can do from anywhere. So, we're, a lot of positions are open, but technology is compounded by that component as well.
I had a question. I see it's coming out of the ESSR grant, the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief, one of the COVID laws passed by Congress. But it was interesting that to just get design work at Williamsport High School on replacing the HVAC out there, which is, I assume is the original one from 51 years ago, 1970?
Correct.
I see Mr. Rollins coming up. But I was just wondering, what goes in that it's going to cost $565,000 just for the design work? I understand they're probably going to revamp the system totally, but probably the public would like to know, because I'm going to say this, this board and the superintendent are accused by some people in this community of wasting money and so forth, and I know that's not the, that's not, that's not correct.
So, Mr. Stauffer, the 565 would have been, if we had awarded Williamsport High School individually to C.J.L., you see the highlight at 685. They, we bid that, we gave them the opportunity to bid each project and then bid the combined, if we awarded both of them. So, we were able to save about $65,000, submit, having them awarded to both projects. So, the 565 is, it's probably something in that neighborhood, but it's actually a little less because the total is 685 in total.
I was just wondering what goes into...
But, yeah.
...design work. I mean...
Sure, sure. So, it's a multidisciplinary approach. There's a lot going on in these designs. It's not just simply saying, I have an air handler, and I'm just going to replace it in kind. So, you have mechanical engineers, electrical engineers, you have fire protection engineers, you have an architect, because sometimes the new ducts require chases to run ducts in. They have to alter the ceilings, put up a false wall to run a duct. There's all sorts of things that go into that. So, there's many consultants that are involved, not just one. At the Williamsport job especially, we're doing more than just replacing the air systems. We're also going to replace the boilers and the chillers if needed. So, it's a design of the whole system. Often, when we do an HVAC replacement, it's just replacing air handlers. But in this case, we're doing a little bit more than that. The boilers are darn near 40 years old there. So, we're doing everything there, and we're lucky to have this ESSR money so that we can take that full approach and be able to take advantage of those dollars that are available. We're also adding systems to the gym, the activity room, I think they use it for wrestling and other things, and in the shops. We're going to air condition those spaces. So, those systems are going to be brand new and different than what's there already. And finally, with the new technology that would be used for air conditioning systems today, often you have to design these things in a way where you can't reuse the existing duct work, because the old systems distributed air one way, the new systems distribute it a different way. So, you can't, while you'll look at those old ducts and see if you can use them, often you can't. You have to delete them all. So, the engineer has to take all of that and look at everything and make those determinations. So, I think it's, and on top of that, the school's so big that we can't do the air conditioning in one summer. So, the engineer's service is spread over a couple of years during construction alone, let alone the design period leading up to it. So, all those things add to those costs, and that's why these things cost what they do.
Was the new weight room and that area, the new area of the renovations a few years ago that the boosters got on to, was that air conditioned?
It was. In fact, we're not going to touch that one. It's young enough.
But the shops and, the old shops and stuff, they were not air conditioned.
They were not.
And what we, and what used to be the auxiliary gym, the wrestling room, that was not air conditioned.
Correct.
Right.
So, all those, all those areas that you just mentioned are going to be air conditioned now after this project's done.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I know this is being paid for with the COVID federal funds, correct?
Yes.
Was this, if we didn't have that money available, would this have been eligible for the match from the state?
Yes.
If we give 21%. The state gives a 79%. Was it on the schedule for this year, or were we able to move it up?
It wasn't on the schedule for this year, but it was in the next couple of years, I believe. And so, we just able to move it ahead a little bit and get it done.
Just for folks, you know, one of the things we always try to ask for with these, with these projects is we want to bring in as much state funding as we can so not to impact the county. So, we ask the county to give 21%, and the state will kick in 79%.
That's correct.
It's a heck of a deal.
It is.
I would again implore the county commissioners to always maximize that. They tend to not take advantage of that, which I tend to think is physically irresponsible. Yeah? So, thank you.
Anything else?
Yeah, I have kind of, I don't know if it's more of a statement or question, but for number four, for some of the earth, the earthworks contract renewal here, you know, as I, obviously, we, you know, we all would like to have more money. I don't know anyone that wouldn't like to have more money. But, you know, when we look at some of the things on here, like maybe mulch, and I drive down the roadway here to get to the building, you know, there's, I mean, jeez, some of those trees must have, you know, 40 yards in circumference of mulch around them, you know? And it just seems like some of this stuff is where we might have an opportunity to start cutting some of our costs. And obviously, mulch, I mean, that's just one thing I'd say. Obviously, that would be a very minuscule amount of the third of a billion-dollar budget we have. But, you know, just some of those things, you know, I hope that we could kind of take a look at how we're spending some of our money here, you know? You know, and I don't have anything against mulch, although you might disagree with me if you drive by my house. You know, it's, it's just one of those things where it looks nice, but we could still make it look, you know, pretty good where it's still presentable and, you know, cut some of those, I don't want to necessarily say cut some of those corners, but, you know, kind of, kind of keep that in mind as, as we move forward with some of those things as well.
Isn't some of that mulch there on the playgrounds?
It, yeah. It's not...
And I know it's not all. Like you said, mulch is a very small part of it.
It's on the playgrounds, it's not around the flowers and the shrubbery at the schools. I guarantee you, it wasn't at Williamsport. I don't know at other schools, but...
Under swing sets.
Yeah, correct. There's mulch that has, and it's got to be a certain depth.
12 inches or something like that.
Yeah, for falls.
No, it's, I just, as I was driving up, I just saw all that sitting there, you know? And just something that, it might be an opportunity for us to save some money in one place to go and move it somewhere else.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we're voting on Mr. Pickford's motion. Mr. Stauffer's second for approval on the evening's consent agenda. All those in favor? We have six affirmative votes, and the student member concurs. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stauffer, I'm going to ask that you take over, please, with the second item of new business. I'm going to need to excuse myself.
All righty. Okay, the next item of business is the consideration of a memorandum of understanding, an MOU, between the Board of Education of Washington County and the Washington County Teachers Association. So, I'll turn it over to Ms. Baker and Mr. Becker.
Good evening, Mr. Stauffer, Dr. Michael, and members of the board. Mr. Neil Becker, President of the Washington County Teachers Association, and I are here this evening. We're requesting your approval for a memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education of Washington County and the Washington... the Board of Education of Washington County and the Washington County Teachers Association regarding a temporary provisions of the negotiated agreement.
Rebecca, any comments?
Do I make comments now, or do I make?
I think the staff has requested the board's consideration, the memorandum of understanding, so maybe a motion, second, and then open for discussion.
Can we do that now with all five of us here right now?
The four.
Yeah, we have four.
Yeah, so once you have four.
Okay, I thought we needed five, sorry.
Okay, is there a motion?
Vice President Stauffer, I move to approve a memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education of Washington County and the Washington County Teachers Association regarding temporary additional provisions of the negotiated agreement.
Sarah, second.
Second.
Any discussion? Any comments?
Becker.
Seeing none? Problem? Or nothing? Do you know if you can?
I don't believe I can vote on it.
Oh, you can't, that's right.
So what I'd like to comment on is I regret, and I wish all the teachers were still here and the people that might hear, that we can't secure enough substitutes. You know, we continue to grow our substitute pool, we continue to look for substitute opportunities. I think the COVID issue is, you know, has people concerned about working part-time in the school. But I do greatly appreciate our staff for stepping up and covering for each other and doing what needs to be done. And I'm glad we're able to reach agreement on this MOU for the remainder of this year. We need to continue to work to solve the substitute problem. I know it's not the money that the teachers want for covering classes, they want their time, and that's been clearly stated. So that's what I'm seeking, a solution to secure substitutes so we can provide teachers so they don't, don't have to give up their planning time or whatever duties they're surrendering to work on substituting for each other. So I appreciate the cooperation of WC TA, and I'm glad we're able to reach this agreement. And I know it's not perfect, but I'm glad we're able to do this much, and we'll continue to work on the substitute shortage.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Michael, and to the board for your vote tonight, and to the HR team. We've, we've had extensive discussions about this topic and many others, and this is a, again, as we've, as I've spoken about many times, this is a step forward to address a symptom. It's definitely not a solution, and we appreciate the effort to get where we've gotten with this one, we really do. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is a donation to Boonsborough High School from the Nora Roberts Foundation. Welcome, Dr. Wilcox.
Good evening, Vice President Stauffer, Dr. Michael, and board members. I am requesting approval of a gift of $21,000 from the Nora Roberts Foundation to Boonsborough High School to be used by the drama, band, and orchestra programs.
Okay, is there a motion?
$21,000 to Boonsborough High School from the Nora Roberts Foundation.
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions?
Just that, thank you.
Do you have any idea? Oh, go ahead.
I just want to thank the Nora Roberts Foundation. When I was, or I remember, I think, when I was in elementary or middle school, they used to give free tickets to Suns games and a lot of these other great things, and I'm glad to see that they're still continuing the work they do.
Do you have any idea what these three groups might use this money for? Any?
No.
Have they looked that far ahead?
Typically, they're, use the money to purchase things that their current budget, either from the school or from their booster clubs, doesn't allow them to purchase. So, for example, additional music or services or equipment or instruments, it really depends on the need of the program as to what they're, use their money for.
Any other questions or discussion? We'll get the vote, all those in favor of the motion? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Superintendent's report, Dr. Michael.
Thank you. Mr. Stauffer, board members, tonight, we want to celebrate American Education Week. American Education Week is from November 15th through 19th, I believe it's mentioned earlier in the evening. And we have three recognitions that we want to do at this time. So I'd like to recognize our ESP group, our teachers group, and our administrators group, and then I would like to invite the board for a photo opportunity when that's concluded. So if Mr. Prue and President of Washington County Educational Support Staff, Emery Hines, would come forward, I know we kind of took away your prop there, I guess, but Mr. Prue, if you would share a proclamation with Ms. Hines, please.
Thank you, Dr. Michael. It's my pleasure to present the proclamation in honor of American Education Week to Washington County Educational Support Personnel. Then it reads, whereas Washington County Public Schools is committed to excellence in education and recognizes the important role that educational support personnel play in ensuring educational success. And whereas, WCPS education support personnel includes transportation, maintenance and operations, technology, administrative and clerical, paraprofessionals, food service, and other student support personnel. And whereas, educational support personnel provide a safe, healthy, and productive learning environment for students and serve our children and communities with care and professionalism. Therefore, be it proclaimed that the week of November 15th to 19th, 2021, be observed, be observed as American Education Week, and that Wednesday, November 17th, be observed as National Educational Support Personnel Day in Washington County Public Schools, presented this 16th day of November, 2021, signed by the board members of the Board of Education.
Thank you, Ms. Hines.
Thought I'd have a table.
Good evening, Board of Education members and Dr. Michael. On behalf of the Washington County Educational Support Personnel, I want to thank you for this recognition of the hard work and dedication of the ESP members of Washington County Public Schools. ESPs are the hardworking custodians, bus drivers, food service workers, paraprofessionals, maintenance and clerical staff that often go forgotten, yet we are essential to the smooth operation of educating our students. We appreciate tonight's recognition and look forward to a successful remainder of the school year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our education support personnel, obviously, we could not run the school system without them, they're an extremely valuable portion of our staff and working with our students. So our second recognition, Dr. Willow is going to share, our Associate Superintendent for Curriculum and Instruction, with President of the Washington County Teachers Association, as well as the Vice President of the Teachers Association, first of all, President Neil Becker, Colonel Val and Vice President. And if you would share the proclamation, please.
Yes. Good evening, President Williams, Vice President Stauffer, Dr. Michaels, and Dr. Michael, and members of the board. Whereas Washington County Public Schools is committed to excellence in education and recognizes the important role that teachers play in ensuring educational success. And whereas, WCPS teachers are more than just educators, they are also role models, mentors, motivators, listeners, encouragers, caregivers, and coaches who significantly impact the lives of children. And whereas, teachers are responsible for shaping our future. And WCPS congratulates the Washington County Teachers Association on their 100th year anniversary of supporting teachers in the workplace. Therefore, be it proclaimed that the week of November 15th through the 19th, 2021, be observed as American Education Week in Washington County Public Schools, presented the 16th day of November, 2021, and again, signed by all of the board members. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Willow. Thank you, Carol, for being here today, and to the board and superintendent and staff. This, this proclamation does express all that educators do. It's not the, hey, you're a teacher in front of kids for seven or eight hours. There is so much more to the job, and I am grateful to represent the educators in Washington County Teachers Association, and thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening. Thank you very much.
We want to thank all of our teachers for the hard work that they're doing, not just this year, but every year. But it's been, you know, tremendous undertaking this year, they continue to persevere, they continue to do the very best for our students, and it's greatly appreciated. I do want to note, Ms. Malin, that I have turned in my statement to your website, so if other board members or board members or other people want to do that, it's very simple process, name and a couple of things, and a place to write your statement, so I turned that in last week. And then again, from the board, we wanted to recognize the 100th year anniversary, we've included it in proclamation on purpose this evening for that very reason. So again, thank you to all of our teachers for their hard work and for coming tonight. Thank you.
How do you pick your favorite?
Well, I didn't pick out specific teachers, but I thought about specific people as I went back through, all the way through when I was in school, up through when I taught, and the teachers that have, that helped me get started, and then my time as an administrator. So it kind of gives a little storyline of, a little bit of my past there in what I shared on the website. And now we have Dr. Pugh, our Associate Superintendent Administration and Leadership, and Dr. Rachel Kane-Captrich, Chairman of the Washington County Association Administrators and Supervisors. And likewise, we want to thank our administrators for all that they do, our school-based administrators, our CES administrators. Everyone's working extremely hard to make a successful year, and we want to help celebrate that with American Education Week. So, Dr. Pugh?
So the proclamation reads, whereas Washington County Public Schools is committed to education, excellence in education, and recognize the important role that administrators and supervisors play in ensuring educational success. And whereas, WCPS administrators and supervisors provide vision and leadership with professionalism to promote academic achievement and social and emotional learning in a safe and productive learning environment for students and staff. And whereas, administrators and supervisors positively influence the leaders of tomorrow. Therefore, be it proclaimed that the week of November 15th through the 19th, 2021, be observed as American Education Week in Washington County Public Schools, presented this 16th day of November, 2021.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh, the board members, Dr. Michael. On behalf of the administrators and supervisors, I just want to say we're grateful for all the support that we get from the board and from CES, and I just want to thank my colleagues. It's been a difficult year over the past, and they have been very flexible. We've had to support a lot of people through a lot of different changes that keep coming. But my colleagues have risen to the challenge, and I appreciate the recognition. Thank you.
We'll ask our recipients to bring forward their proclamations and stand in front of the dais.
Yeah, I wasn't here for the orchestration.
All right, for the next part of our presentation, Jeffrey, or Chief Operating Officer, Mike Emble, Supervisor of Food Nutrition Services, and Chad Chriswell, Senior Project Manager and Planning Supervisor, are here to present our annual enrollment report, as well as our annual free and reduced meal report. Gentlemen?
Thank you, Dr. Michael, members of the board, thank you for having us. As Dr. Michael indicated, this is our annual enrollment report, bringing forth the September 30th enrollment number, which we often refer to as our money number. That's the, the number that the state uses when calculating foundation rates for the subsequent fiscal year, so that would be FY '23, beginning on July 1 of '22. Mr. Emble will also be presenting the, the number of students eligible for free and reduced-priced meals as it relates to compensatory education funding from the state. So that is, again, only students counted in grades K to 12. As you may know, last year, the state decided through legislation that because of the year of COVID, the attendance count taken in September of 2020 would not be used for subsequent funding years. So what we've asked Mr. Chriswell to do this year with his presentation is to show you the variance to 2020, but also to give you a look back to 2019. So that was, we look at three-year average rolling numbers now for funding purposes. It's almost as if the year 2020 did not exist for a fiduciary perspective and for financing from the state. So we'll be probably rolling very quickly through the 2020 numbers, but giving you more of a variance and talking more about the considerations from 2019 to 2021. So, Mr. Chriswell?
Thank you, Jeff. So as Jeff indicated, every year we come forward and we present comparisons of the prior year, looking back to September of 2020. As a whole, for the 21,100 students we have in the system, we're down 11 from where we were last year. We're up a little bit in our K to 5 number, we're down 244 in our middle school numbers, and we're up about 60 in our high school numbers. Pre-K, we saw a pretty significant increase, we're up 243 students there. So our pre-K to 12 number is up 232 students from this time last year. However, looking back at 2019, as you can see on the chart in orange, that comparison, we're down 734 K to 12 students and around 822 pre-K to 12 students. Probably the better and easier to follow graphic, this is our pre-K to 12 numbers from 2001 through this current year, 2021. And you can see, we're kind of on a steady incline up through 2019. We saw a pretty good dip in 2020 last year, and this year, we're starting to kind of come back to that recovery process, but we'll probably be slow getting back to where we were here over the next few years. And we'll talk about that a little bit more as we go through each of the grade levels and look at the school individually here in the coming slides. But this is a new slide, and we'll go into depth just a little bit more on the three different grade levels within the school system, the K to 5, the grades 6 through 8, and the grades 9 through 12, which are each shown on the attached graph. The K to 5 number, of course, the blue graph, the middle school grades 6 through 8, or the orange line at the lower level, and then the high school grades.
Middle school's yellow.
I'm sorry, yellow, the lower line, and then the high school lines is the red line right in the middle. And we'll touch on each of those here individually in a few moments as we go through each of the schools. So again, looking at the individual elementary schools, our first half of schools, they're all pretty flat, up just a little bit. Of note, I would point out Jonathan Hager, as we continue to see the Hager Crossing development build out, we're starting to see a little bit of an increase there, along with the McCleary Hill development that passed through. Looking at the comparison of those schools from two years ago, you can see the impact of the new Sharpsburg Elementary School, where we have Boonsborough Elementary down by about 100 students from where they were two years ago. That was a result of the attendance zone realignment. And then again, you can see the continual progression of the Jonathan Hager Elementary as it continues to fill up as it was anticipated. Looking at the balance of the elementary schools, again, it kind of goes forward and brings forth our 169 increase from last year to this year. For the most part, everything's pretty flat. We've seen some grade levels increase, some decrease. Ruth Ammon-Roe, we saw a large incoming kindergarten class, a small exiting second-grade class, kind of the opposite at Selma Avenue. But then going back and again, looking at the two-year history, we're down by about 414 where we were from 2019. And it kind of goes across the board. Sharpsburg's up 70, again, as a result of the attendance zone realignment, where we brought students from Boonsborough to provide enrollment relief there and Pleasant Valley. But for the most part, the other schools are staying pretty consistent from last year to this year, from what we presented last year. What's interesting is when we look at the attendance zone, or the attendance graph of the elementary school, the K to 5 students, you can see that we kind of had a little bit of a bubble, starting in 2012, 2013, and it started to come down, and we're going to talk about that when we get to the middle school grades. Last year, we saw a pretty significant dip, and then you can see, we're kind of on the road to recover here in 2021. This is just a little closer look at the graph we showed in the second slide that we presented. At the middle school, we're down 244 students. Last year, we talked about the bubble passing through, that'll become apparent in here in two slides. Springfield had the largest decrease, where we saw a large exiting eighth grade and smaller incoming sixth grade. We'll see an increase at Williamsport when we get to the high school slides. But again, looking at the two-year changes, it was 384 less than where we were from two years ago. And getting to the graph where it kind of makes... where it kind of makes the numbers a little bit easier to see, you can actually see the bubble that started in 2017, and it's kind of progressed through, and we're starting to actually see that pass through. And that's now passing on to our high school. So we can expect a couple of years of that to go through the high school grade levels, and then kind of return to more of a normalcy for enrollment that we would typically see. Looking at the high school enrollment, as I indicated, we're up about 60 total students. North High and South High are both up by about 35 from where they were last year. Williamsport, as I mentioned, we had the large exiting eighth grade from Springfield Middle that came into Williamsport High this year, which caused us to see an increase there. Looking at the two-year history, it was pretty flat from where it was two years ago, even though we saw an increase this year. We didn't see much of a change last year. There was only a difference of three students last year. So this was really the first year where we saw the impact of the bubble. Had we not been in a pandemic, I think this would have been a little higher in the year 2020 and 2021. I think it actually brought it down a little bit, but we would expect another year or two of this before we kind of see that bubble pass through and those migrate to other areas after graduation. Looking at special center enrollments, they've stayed consistent. We're typically between the 70 and 80 range there. And looking back at the two-year history on that, again, it's always between 73 to 78, 80, and those have stayed pretty consistent for our comparisons. So with that, I'll hand it over to Mike.
Good evening. So, it's a free and reduced meal status for the compensatory education funding. As you can imagine, collecting free and reduced meal applications when meals are free is a daunting task. We worked and ran through our normal processes. We put that in our newsletters and worked with principals and shared workbooks with them on a weekly basis, as we normally would, to continually actively seek to get the free and reduced meal applications processed. Even though we're showing a 2.3% decrease this year, that doesn't necessarily mean our funding is going to be decreased. And Mr. Prue might be able to speak to that a little bit. We're looking at, the state is looking at the carryover students. We had 1,724 carryover students. And what that means is, for USDA purposes, for the last two years, we have carried over the students' free and reduced meal status due to the pandemic and meals being free. For comp ed funding purposes, they wanted to see those numbers separately. And we're still waiting for MSD to know whether they're going to fund based on the carryover number or not. And that could be a significant impact. But we did, it was, I think it was good news that they wanted to see that number separately after many school systems brought to their attention, that that could significantly negatively impact the comp ed funding. So with that, I'll let Mr. Prue close it out.
Yeah, I think, you know, to add on to what Mr. Embley was saying, and we had this discussion, I think, with the delegation last week, I think Delegate McKay had some strong thoughts on the topic of finding another metric. And I think there is, after years of what I'll call rumblings and stirrings at the federal level about the universal free meal program for schools, I think that is gaining speed and gaining momentum in a way that I haven't seen, you know. And as most of you know, you know, prior to my four years in my current position, I was Supervisor of Food Services here for nine and six in another district. So I've been intimately in tune to the free and reduced meal price world for nearly two decades. I think that could seriously come to fruition. And that poses a challenge for the state of Maryland to identify what metric they want to use to gauge poverty and how that to address the funding sources within the state of Maryland. There are rumblings at the state, as Mr. Embley indicated, that carryover students may be funded out of the compensatory education bucket. And what is new heading into FY '23 is that compensatory education identified students will be funded at a percentage of the foundation rate in a way that they have not been funded previously. Typically, there was a pot of money for compensatory education identified by the budget, by the governor in the budget. And then your portion of that pot was measured against the number of free and reduced meal students identified in every other school system in the state. So we were down, and everybody was up. We would take a serious hit in terms of our compensatory education funding. If we were up and everybody was up, it might not matter. Now, we will all be gained, we'll all be rated and funded applicably based on what it takes to fund, to educate students that may be coming from poverty situations. And I think we'll see that moving forward as we look at the budget as we head into the month of December, and we see the superintendent draft coming out just before the holidays. So I think with that, we're happy to take any questions you may have on the numbers that have been presented.
Any questions for the team?
Yeah, I'll bite on that, I guess. So, I mean, you made it sound like the numbers weren't that bad, but, I mean, from what I was looking at, that's a pretty significant decrease in enrollment. Am I missing something there?
I think it's more not necessarily that it's, we haven't recovered as quickly.
Right.
And so I think that's the key takeaway with this year's numbers, is I think we expected a quicker bounce back, whether it was held off in the early stages by Delta, whether it was families went into other learning situations and have decided they prefer that model. Still remains to be seen. But I think that's the key takeaway in the difference between the 19 and the 20 and the 21 numbers, as I think we had hoped. I think, as Chad probably, you know, can recall from last year, I think we, or maybe even from the spring enrollment projections, we didn't forecast that we would fully bounce back the 700 students from last year, but I think maybe we thought we might see half of them. And I think that's what's missing.
That is correct. And it wasn't just us. It was also other LEAs across the state. We were all very optimistic and hopeful that we would return to some normalcy. And I think we're all kind of seeing that it's taking a little, maybe a little longer than what we were thinking.
Yeah. And I'm not trying to point any fingers either, you know. I know it's tough for everyone. It's not just a state, Washington County issue, or even a state issue. It's across the country. I will say, in my personal opinion, and I have nothing to back this up on, it's not like I'm out doing studies or making phone calls, but, you know, it just seems to me like, you know, we could go talk about the masks. I've said many times I'm against the masks, you know. Would we get more students in schools? Maybe we would. Would we get more students out of school if we had them off? I don't know. So, you know, it's, that's, you know, up for debate. But I will say that the quarantine thing as well, you know, when we're sending healthy kids home and other private schools are given the option, I think that is something that would certainly help increase our enrollment. You know, that's my thoughts on that.
Mr. Chriswell, so looking at this data with regard to enrollment changes, is there existing data that would tell us how many of these students have transferred out of our school system into another Maryland school system, or out of the state to another school system, where people are relocating? Would the data also be able to tell us those students who are opting out, having their records transferred to private schools? Would we have that information?
I would have to go through Student Services to get a little bit more of that. I can tell you, we have been watching the birth rates even up until the pandemic, and we've seen a decrease in birth rates in the county.
So this all can't be attributed to students leaving for sundry reasons, whether it's transferring out of district, or opting out of the public school system in favor of a private school?
I would say that would be correct.
Birth rate?
It's definitely a multitude of reasons. I don't think it's any one. From my expertise or discussions with other counties and our demographer, who, you know, will help us when we go through and look at the enrollment projections, we have been watching the birth rates, as I said, decline. So as we have a number of students leave, if those same number of students aren't showing up in kindergarten,
Right.
Then we're going to see somewhat of a decline in enrollment. But then that is sometimes offset by the amount of migration that we see within the county, where new houses are coming up, or people move out, and people with school age children come in. And we'll see an increase across, you know, grade levels, where maybe we had 1,700 students in first grade last year, and this year we have 1,750 students. That would also help us see a population. And we had experienced that, which was part of what the incline of that growth was. That wasn't all just birth rates. So it's several factors. We definitely are seeing an increase in the number of homeschool students. That percentage went from our typical 5% up to about 8% for the past two years. But again, we're hoping to see that come back to our conventional 5% as we move forward. So the pinpoint of one exact thing is difficult. To say it's a multitude of things, I think, would be more accurate.
Thank you. Mr. Stauffer?
I noticed the line for grade 6 through 8 from 2001 to this year. That's the steadiest line I've ever seen on a graph. There's no fluctuation hardly. What was the reason for that?
Just conventional numbers coming through, we've kind of stayed at that level. Yeah, it's-
It just amazes me that it stayed that level all those years.
And again, some of it's within the range of the graph, but yet, we've stayed pretty consistent.
Yeah.
And then we saw a couple of class sizes of 1,800 students instead of our typical 1,500 to 1,600.
There was a little raise there.
Yes, sir, where the bubble kind of came through.
What impact, because I'm not on facilities anymore, what impact would this development, they're going to put out of BlackRock, they're talking about it, it went from 500 and some units to 1,000 units, so apartments, townhouses, single-family homes. Do we have any idea if that's approved by the county commissioners? And it goes to the 1,000 and some, what impact that's going to have on our schools?
Yes, sir. We have had correspondence with the county over the impact of that. I think we've discussed that with the Facility Committee, with the board members that are in that committee. We're certainly paying attention to it. It would definitely have an impact to Ruth Amonroe, the Smithsburg High, Smithsburg Middle School attendance moving forward. So we're certainly paying close attention to it. Actually, a small portion of it would even impact Greenbrier Elementary as well. So, yes, we're definitely in tune with it. We're keeping our ears up, and hopefully, as we get more information, we can come back and share that information. We have been tracking the 500 and some unit development in the Educational Facility Master Plan, but the current plan kind of doubles that. So that would be something we would bring up, obviously, if it came to fruition.
And I think, Mr. Stauffer, to almost the point of Mrs. Williams' question, the impact is also predicated upon whether that development can force in-migration. So if it's a shift of students from one location in the county to another location in the county, perhaps to some extent, you can transfer resources, you can redistrict, you can do a number of things to try to mitigate that. But at the point that it triggers in-migration, then you have an issue because you've not released resources in another location to be able to apply to the schools that are affected by that kind of a development. I also wanted to add, I think, you know, in relation to this slide, I think why you potentially don't see as much change on this graph as you might see on, let's say, high school, or what I think we definitely see in our elementary, is you're only triggering three grades. So when you think about the amount of space it actually, you know, takes in our school system, it's three of 13 grades when we talk K to 12. So it's only a quarter of the population. And I think as a whole, that kind of flattens it out. And when I think about where we were when I started in 2008, I think we've been talking about 21 and 1/2 to 22,000 students for a long time. So our growth really has been slow and steady, you know, up a little bit, down a little bit, up a little bit more, down a little bit. We kind of have triggered back and forth, and I think that's reflective on that line chart.
I have a question. Chad, you might have mentioned this. The drop of 66 students from Washington County Tech, is that because some of them were moved to Barbara Ingram?
I would think that's a little bit of it. Probably recruitment during COVID, you know, some challenges like that. I think we'll see Tech High rebound to about 600 students again, especially with the new diesel program. So we did move two programs out, replaced with one program, but we're coming back with the new program. We'll talk about that in just a minute. So we anticipate it'll rebound and come back.
Very nice segue, Mr. Bickford.
Yeah, there you go.
Very well done.
But I have another question.
I have one too.
Messed up the segue.
With the increase at the city, well, North High, South High, and Williamsport, are we, we're over capacity at South High, right? We're at 120%, 120%?
114%.
114%. Where are we at North High? Sorry to quiz you.
North High, we are, I can tell you in a second, sorry. We are at 97%.
Okay. And then, Williamsport, we have, we have, right?
We are at 88% at Williamsport, yes, sir.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
And I think it's reflective of what we're seeing in terms of developments adding to the community.
Yeah.
That are adding especially in the I-70 corridor south of the city. That's where we're seeing a good bit of our immigration.
Having come-
Or even just migration within the county to those locations.
Absolutely. Having come from Frederick, living in Frederick, grew up here, we lived in Frederick for a long time, came back here. Certainly, that development along Sharpsburg Pike is very reminiscent of some of the areas like Urbana and stuff that just started to see serious growth. So I'm glad you guys are keeping an eye on it.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen. I'm sorry.
I know that you mentioned earlier that there's possibly a moving away from the farms number. Do you know what number possibly could be used if we moved away from that?
One of the areas that's been speculated is to use the subset of the farm data that we call the direct certification number. That's the number of students that have been identified by other sources receiving benefits. So it may be families receiving Supplemental Nutritional Assistance Program, which used to be called the Food Stamp Program, could be the Cash Assistance Program, could be Medicare records for children. So that's a number that's been bantered. It is, it's not necessarily reflective of the community because there are, in places where you have higher rates of immigration, your direct certification percentage is a lower portion of your overall free and reduced rate. So the state may have to look at other data. They may have to look at other census income-type data to get something that maybe is more reflective and, for lack of a better term, fair to all counties.
Peter, Mr. Bickford.
No other questions?
You read them all.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Two other pieces of my report tonight are both going to be visuals. You know, we're very excited about the renovations we have planned for Washington County Technical High School. Across the county, we've been renovating various career and technology education programs and other areas around in our buildings. But at Tech High, this is one of our most significant renovations that'll affect programs. So I'm very excited about it. At our next meeting, I hope to bring to you a walkthrough of the new program. It'll be like architect rendering, but you'll actually physically feel like you're walking through the rendering. But tonight's just a little promo about our diesel and the renovations at Tech High to happen, and more to come next board meeting. And then on December 21st, the board will be actually voting on the construction bids for the renovations at Tech High. So if we could roll that video, please. ...................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
When I first heard about the program being started, I was very excited. I wish it's something that would have been available when I went to Tech. It would have been very beneficial towards my career as well. I believe this program will provide students with all the necessary training they will need to be successful in the diesel industry.
As a representative of the diesel industry and part of the advisory group, I think the implementation of the diesel technology program at the Washington County Technical High School is a win for our workforce. In our company alone, we have a shortage of qualified diesel technicians and always looking for hires. Look around the room. Everything in here was hauled by a truck, and we'll always have a need for qualified technicians to work with.
So my hope is, in less than a year, you'll be joining us here at Washington County Technical High School for the grand opening of our diesel program and the unveiling of our four new upgraded programs as well. These CTE updates and program enhancements are going to help keep Washington County cutting edge for our students for long-term use. Again, it's going to be a big ticket purchase for the board on December 21st, so we just want to try to educate our public about what's coming and also to help promote our programs for next years. We're working on recruitment already for Washington County Technical High School. And again, at our next board meeting, the architect walkthrough of the building is kind of a cool setup. You actually get a real feel for what's happening in the renovation as well as the new building. That large grass area where we were standing, where we were filming, that's where the diesel building will go. And you'll see that at the next board meeting as we kind of do that characterization there of the architect rendering. The last thing I have is a teaser about Boonsboro High School Auditorium Project. Earlier, we accepted a, or you accepted a gift from the Nora Roberts Foundation. Nora Roberts Foundation, in partnership with the board, has had a huge, huge investment with the Boonsboro Auditorium lobby, storage renovation down at Boonsboro. And there's been some delays in the project because of shipping of items and finishing up, construction delays for, again, items that need to be secured. But the project's really coming together. The auditorium looks fantastic. And we're going to have a longer video at some point with more students sharing and a little bit more of an unveiling of the lobby area and some other areas. But tonight, just a little teaser. And again, I want to thank the Nora Roberts Foundation for all their work and the staff and everyone that's been working hard to make this another successful project here in Washington County. So we'll probably finish with this when the video concludes. I'm finished my comments. Roll that, John.
I left for two weeks in 2020, and I came back this August in 2021. And when I came back to see a completely new renovated space, I was just completely bewildered by all of the new things that we could do with this space.
This is designed to be the most professional experience you can possibly have, and we think it will be a block of the space. Our energies are not going to be invested in working around the problems, but are going to be invested in trying to do the biggest and best thing that we can do. What we now see is a Washington County Board of Education partner with our superintendent, partner with community foundations, with the Nora Roberts Foundation, committing themselves to another school to support and expand the arts opportunities for our students in this community.
I'm extremely excited to bring the community in for a production because I want to be able to show them that our program is still here.
This new space is, it's completely game-changing. To do a production in this space would be the perfect time of the senior year.
Just a little teaser, once to come. It's very exciting to see the auditorium starting to wrap up and some other, like I say, the lobby, the outside, the entranceway, security vestibule, all those things are all part of this project. And we'll bring you more information as the project wraps up.
Thank you, Dr. Michael, for your reports and for your update. At this time, we'll have personnel action with Dr. Pugh coming forward.
Good evening again, President Williams, Dr. Michael, members of the board. As discussed earlier in closed session, there are a number of staff changes for your consideration. At this time, I ask for your approval of today's personnel actions.
Thank you, Dr. Pugh. Is there a motion?
President Williams, I move to approve the personnel actions dated Tuesday, November 16th, 2021, as presented in closed session.
Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Bigford. Any questions? Okay, we'll move to the vote. We're voting on approval of the personnel actions for today as discussed earlier in closed session. All those in favor? Okay, we have five affirmative votes. Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Pugh.
Thank you.
We'll move to reports to the board. We have our board member committee reports. Mr. Evans, would you like to begin?
Yeah, we rescheduled our next meeting to be, I believe it was Thursday, December 2nd.
Thank you. Mr. Bigford?
A policy meets next Tuesday at 11:30 here in the auditorium.
Thank you. Mrs. Murray?
You have any resources?
This will not be meeting again until Tuesday, January 11th, 2022, here at the CES. And I'm not sure about the time.
Thank you. For Dr. Zentmeyer, with regard to the curriculum and instruction committee, that committee will be meeting on December 6th at 1:30 here at CES. Mr. Gupta, did you have anything that you wanted to report on from student government?
I have nothing I'd like to report.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Stauffer, did you have anything that you wanted to share with regard to the MAVE Legislative Committee meeting?
Well, I'll short this up because I've got four pages of notes, so I won't go through all of it. But the MAVE Legislative Committee met yesterday for two hours. And John Woolums, the PA is on for MAVE to that committee, went over the stands of the Maryland Association of Boards of Education on certain issues, the 2022 legislative priorities and positions, four basic guiding principles, I'll just name those. Local governance, but that's, that's within the, what local governance is allowed within the laws that govern education in the state of Maryland. Support for full state funding for public schools, support increased state funding for construction and renovation, and support for sustained and increased local government investments in education. Those are the four guiding principles. They then went over the association's stand on the various issues on local funding, maintenance of effort, special education, state assessments and curriculum, student health, nutrition and fitness, student behavior and discipline, school safety and security, employee relations and collective bargaining, charter schools, vouchers and public funding for non-public schools, federal education funding and policy, unfunded mandates, and our position on elected, appointed, and hybrid school boards. In the state of Maryland, many school boards are elected, some are appointed, but some are a combination of appointed and elected boards and so forth. We then had a little bit of discussion about the blueprint for Maryland's future, which will guide education for over this next decade in Maryland and so forth. Went over federal updates. There was some discussion about the OSHA ETS that is being put out by the Biden administration in Washington and so forth, and it's held up in litigation, as some of you may know, if you follow the news and so forth. Probably going to end up in the Supreme Court. And then the General Assembly, they're going to have a special session on congressional redistricting, I think on January 6th, I think, was the date. There are leadership changes taking place in the General Assembly, some longtime delegates and so forth announcing that they were stepping down and would not run for reelection, which will change the chairmanship of, or chairperson on some of the major committees and so forth. And then we went over the calendar, when we would meet again. When I first got on that committee, we met pretty much just during General Assembly from about December to April and so forth. And now it's every month and sometimes twice a month. It's a year-round thing now. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. We'll go to miscellaneous business. Under miscellaneous business, we have one item, and that is our list of future agenda items you should have in your packet. Their next meeting on December 7th, that's the board's reorganization meeting, the election of board officers. Also that evening, we will have a presentation of the 2022, 2023 middle and high school program of studies. We have a work session coming up on December 21st, and that will be about the superintendent's draft fiscal year 2023 budget. If you have suggested agenda items, please let a member of the agenda planning committee know about those. We'll move now to board member comments. Mr. Gupta, would you like to begin?
Sure. I mean, besides thanking all of the teachers who came out today, I just want to mention that I am visiting school student council meetings. I've already visited South's student council meeting in Williamsport, and I plan to visit Tech High, Smithsburg, and Clear Spring, I think, within the next three weeks. So if you're a student listening, I'm not sure how many students are listening, but if you're a parent listening and your student goes to one of those schools, tell them to stop by to their student council meeting and say hi to me, and I'd love to talk to students about the issues they're facing.
Thank you. Mrs. Murray?
Yes, as we celebrate American Education Week, I'd like to thank all the dedicated administrators, teachers, and ESP for their hard work and their dedication to the students. And of course, being a former ESP, I'd like to say happy Educational Support Personnel Day tomorrow. You certainly work hard, and I don't think the school system would be as great as it is without you.
Mr. Bigford?
Just echo Linda's comments. Well said.
Mr. Stauffer?
On Thursday, I want to inform the board and the superintendent, I've made, not reservations, but I've made plans to spend the morning at South Agastown High School and the afternoon at Bester Elementary. So I'll be going there. The other thing I'd like to say is, this is National Education Week, and I came up through the public schools of Washington County, and I want to just mention two of my great teachers that I had, but two ladies that taught social studies in South High in the 1960s. One was Ruth Orendorf. Ruth Orendorf, I think there was an article in the paper about her recently, maybe it wasn't. But she is 96 years old now. She lives in Shepherdstown. She's retired. She taught world history, which she took over two years in those days. And she had a very interesting class. I later had the pleasure and privilege to teach with her as a colleague at Williamsport High School years later. But she was a great teacher. I always loved history, and she made it even more interesting. And the other teacher was Margaret Bittner. She taught government in the 12th grade. And the thing about those two teachers that I remember was that they were fair, they were firm, they were consistent, they knew their subject matter. And I think in a large part, they and some other teachers that I had, and I'd mention more, but I'll probably forget somebody, that I modeled my teaching style after for a lot of years. So a lot of good teachers out there today. It's a far different job than what I entered in 1970 and left in 2012. It's entirely different thing out there today.
Thank you, Mr. Stauffer. Mr. Evans?
Yeah, I had the pleasure of, this is a couple of weeks ago, I kind of building off of the Tech High program, there I had the opportunity to go to a Home Builders Association meeting a couple of weeks ago, and we had three students from the Cisco program give a phenomenal presentation. I'll be honest with you, I wish I could speak as well as they do. Very well put together, they knew exactly what they were saying, and excellent program out there. Also, this past Thursday, I was able to go to a couple of Veterans Day ceremonies, one of them at Snook Park, and the other with a couple of my colleagues here for, over to Clear Spring. And the band and the chorus over there did an excellent job as well. Again, couldn't be any more impressed with the performance that I've seen from the students. And I say this, you know, teachers, you are, and obviously a lot of them have left now, but teachers, you are doing a lot of phenomenal things. We know it's not easy out there, and we will be working to correct all of the concerns, I hope, that have been brought forth to us today. And I just want to let you know that we do appreciate you. And we, I know that some days when you go home, you wonder what you got yourself into, but just know that the community does see the impact that you do have on the kids. And while it's easier to see the bad that's happening than the good, just know that the people that are observing from the outside do see the better. So we do appreciate you. Don't give up on us. We haven't given up on you, and we hope to continue to work together.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. I had to leave the meeting briefly during new business, and as a result, I missed the opportunity to cast a vote on two items. One was the memorandum of understanding between this board and the Washington County Teachers Association. So I would just like to say, to go on record, is saying that I support that memo of understanding, and I'm very appreciative of the opportunity that we have to join together with that understanding. And the second thing that I missed voting on was the donation of the $21,000 to Binsborough High School for the Nora Roberts Foundation. That foundation has been extremely generous to Washington County public schools. And watching that video, to see the beautiful, beautiful renovation that's taking place there, it's just through the generosity of foundations and individuals that great things continue to happen in Washington County public schools. So we're very grateful for that. So if there's nothing further, colleagues, Dr. Michael?
Happy American Education Week to everybody, and thank you for the work.
Happy American Education Week, everyone. Thank you, teacher. Happy Thanksgiving. Yeah, that's it.
Marginally.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.